Good evening and welcome to the December 19th, 2017, Pecosin City School Board Meeting. Mr. Brown?
Jordan will lead us in the pledge. Jordan, Jordan Butler. Jordan is in Ms. Al's kindergarten class. She's the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Travis Butler. Jordan loves to play games with her dad when she's not at school, and her favorite thing to do at school is to play in recess.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and a principle with liberty and justice for all.
Chloe Carpenter will provide the inspirational reading. She is also a student in Ms. Al's kindergarten class. She is the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Stephen Carpenter. Chloe has a nine-year-old sister named Lucy who attends the Pecosin Elementary School. Chloe also loves to play games with her dad when she's not at school. Her favorite thing to do at school this year is recess. Chloe will read the song "Let There Be Peace on Earth" by Jill Jackson and Cy Miller.
Let there be peace on earth and let it begin with me. Let there be peace on earth, the peace that was meant to be. Let peace begin with me. Let this be the moment now to take each moment and live, each moment and peace entirely. Let there be peace on earth and let it begin with me.
Thank you very much. Tonight, our student presentation will be from Ms. Alvez's kindergarten class from Pecosin Primary School. They'll be singing "Friendly Snowman" and "Susie Snowflake." They are under the direction of Ms. Poto. Ms. Alvez's class performed these songs along with another kindergarten class last week when they presented their holiday concert. And right after you sing, everyone, if you would stick around a few minutes, we have a couple of presentations we'd like to do after you sing, and then we would like to come out and visit with you on a short break. Is that okay, parents, kids? Yes?
I'm a friendly snowman, big and fast. Here is my tummy, here is my hat. I'm a happy fellow, here's my nose. I made a snow from my head to my toes. Tap, 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 and that's your windowpane, to tell you she's in town. Here comes Susie Snowflake, soon you will hear her say, "Come out, everyone, and play with me, I have it long to stay. If you want to make a snowman, I'll help you make one, one, two, three. If you want to make a sleigh ride, wee, ride on me. Here comes Susie Snowflake, look at her tumbling down. Bringing joy to every girl and boy, Susie's come to town."
I hate to ask this, Ms. Poto, could we do "Friendly Snowman" again?
"Friendly Snowman" again?
Yeah, would you?
Sure.
I have the gavel, I can ask. This is my favorite part of the year.
Here is my tummy, here is my hat. I'm a happy fellow, here's my nose. I made a snow from my head to my toes.
Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda, Dr. Parrish?
We do not this evening.
Great, let's move on to recognitions.
Wonderful. As Mr. Cass is making his way over, I'd ask that Jenna Horning come forward, please. Mrs. Horning is Pecosin Primary School's Volunteer of the Month. She's the parent of three girls, the youngest being a student at Pecosin Primary, as well as Pecosin Primary School PTO Vice President. Mrs. Horning coordinates the volunteer work of the PTO committees and facilitates the monthly PTO meetings. Mrs. Horning has established a Room Parent Program for each classroom, encouraging parent involvement in assisting teachers with preparing project materials, sending in requested items for special activities, and communicating PTO events to other parents. Mrs. Horning is often at Pecosin Primary School checking on the needs of teachers, setting up for the PTO-sponsored events, or making contact with committee chairs to make a special request happen. Mrs. Horning's dedication to our school is one of the reasons why Pecosin Primary School is such a special place. Please join me in congratulating Jenna Horning for being Pecosin Primary School's Volunteer of the Month. Thank you so much for the support that you provide our school. Next, I would ask that Christina O'Day come forward, please.
She is our December Student of the Month. She is a young lady who shows excellent pride in her school and community. She has an outstanding work ethic, which is proven through her grades and ability to manage her time between school, band, and many leadership activities. Kristi has volunteered at Bon Secours Mary Immaculate Hospital, an Immaculate Conception Catholic Church, where she has organized several service projects through club and officer meetings. She is president of the National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society Vice President, key club vice president, and member of the Tri-M Music Honor Society. She has received the Outstanding English Student of the Year Award, Outstanding Musician of the Year Award, and Outstanding Science Student of the Year Award. Kristi is an outstanding musician and participated in senior regional orchestra. She's principal clarinet, all district symphonic band, all-state band, and Williamsburg Youth Orchestra, marching band section leader, and drum major. Kristi has learned patience, creativity, and confidence through her extracurricular activities. She has learned how to be a good leader that encourages others to reach their full potential. Kristi hopes to attend UVA, Duke, or Johns Hopkins to major in chemistry, go to medical school, and pursue a career in dermatology. Please join me in congratulating Kristi on being the December Student of the Month. Kristi, I'm glad you could squeeze us in on your very busy schedule.
All right, now we're going to take that break and come visit. All right, let's start the meeting back again. Ms. Woodruff, would you come forward with the financial update, please?
Good evening, Chairman Cass, members of the school board, and Dr. Parrish. For the finance report this evening, I want to start with the review of the audit reports. The FY17 audit was completed by Cherry Becker, who has been the auditor since 2009. There are several items we receive as a result of the audit. The first is the city's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFR, where the school division is included as a component unit. The auditors issue several reports within the CAFR. The first one is the Report of Independent Auditor, which describes the scope of the audit and confirms that there were no significant audit findings. On page 115 of the CAFR, the audit opinions are listed, and I am pleased to report that the auditor's opinion was unmodified for the financial statements and federal awards, which is the best opinion that we can receive. In addition, the school division had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified. There is also an Activity Funds Report, and the activity funds are those funds that are held at the school level and are the responsibility of the principal. For the activity funds, the auditors review the year-end financial statements and perform an appropriate level of test work to confirm that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the cash receipts, disbursements, and ending balances. And that was the opinion of the auditors, so this was also a very good report from the auditors. The Activity Fund Communication Letter is a report of internal control deficiencies. You will note that there were no material weaknesses identified. However, on page two, there were a few minor deficiencies that were noted at the primary school. Overall, these are excellent audit reports, and congratulations to the principals and bookkeepers for all of their hard work. And you have all the four of the documents that I just spoke about, and if you have any questions, once you have more time to review, just let me know. Moving on, as we get past the audit, we're moving on to budget. With the upcoming budget process, and since we are beginning a new biennium, I'm going to switch gears to talk about the state re-benchmarking process. And the re-benchmarking begins the biennial budget development process and involves the Board of Education, the Governor, and the General Assembly. And every two years, the direct aid to public education budget is updated or re-benchedmarked. The Standards of Quality, or SOQs, are one of the six budgetary categories where funding is appropriated. There are three components of SOQ costs that are funded, and these consist of the required number of instructional positions, recognized support positions, and recognized non-personal support costs, which are costs such as supplies or utilities. And the support cost components are funded through basic aid, and funding for most of the SOQ accounts is provided on a per-pupil basis and distributed through the average daily membership. Input data used to cost out the three components is updated every two years during re-benchmarking. As you can see, there are a number of factors that go into this process, such as base year number of students and staffing and salaries of teachers and other instructional positions. Please know that the state has made cuts, and two years ago, they capped the support positions, so the re-benchmarking does not bring us back to the SOQ funding level that we were at previously. As you know, the local composite index, or the LCI, determines the wealth of a locality and determines the amount of funding we receive from the state. The General Assembly establishes the composite index in the Appropriation Act, and the formula uses three indicators to estimate the ability to pay for each locality, and these are the true value of real property, Virginia adjusted gross income, and the taxable retail sales. And the composite index has recomputed each biennium using the most recent data available. As Dr. Parrish mentioned last month, Pecosin's composite index decreased slightly for this upcoming biennium, and I've provided you with a graph to show the trend of the last ten bienniums for Pecosin. The Governor's budget was released yesterday, and at first glimpse, it looks like we will receive more money from re-benchmarking. And I just received the Calc tool today, and so I will continue to work through this in the coming month and find out what funding we'll have from the state. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments?
Chairman Cass, I have a question. You said that on page two, it was where it listed the, I can't remember the exact wording.
Are you talking about on the Activities Fund Report? That would be a separate report.
Okay, gotcha.
And there's a list on the second page of all of the findings at each school.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
You see that?
Any other questions, comments? Will you be using the Calc tool on Christmas and maybe get back to us that day?
Probably, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Pappas, would you come forward with the operations update, please?
Good evening, School Board, Chairman Cass, Dr. Parrish. Well, it's that time of year, and the maintenance staff will be busy utilizing the break to facilitate important preventive maintenance practices on some of our largest pieces of equipment, primarily among these at the high school, where we'll be doing preventive maintenance on the chiller and the water cooler. As you may remember, our Federal Food Service Review is scheduled for the week of the 29th of January. During that week, there will be an onsite presence, and we'll be going over everything with our reviewers. This week, they issued us the tasks that we have to complete and fill out, and the reports that we have to gather and send in for what is known as the off-site review. We're coming to a conclusion of doing that, and that'll be sent in as soon as we return. As work continues on the primary school CIP, I'm pleased to report that we now have remote connectivity to the HVAC system there. In fact, that now gives us access remotely to all of our buildings, to one degree or another, to the HVAC systems, which enables us to do troubleshooting, as well as to monitor what's happening in any given space in which we have sensors. Custodial Services will be working over the break to ensure that the school floors receive a shiny new wax for the return of faculty, staff, and students, and they will be coordinating with both the IT Department and the Maintenance Department to do some modifications to computer labs that cannot be facilitated during the regular school weeks. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Pappas, any questions, comments? Thank you very much. Dr. Fox, could we get an instructional update, please?
Good evening, Chairman Cass, Vice Chair Whitaker, members of the board, and Dr. Parrish. My update this evening will provide you with some information about the portrait of a graduate and updates on our program of studies. Last month, I shared with you information from the Virginia Board of Education, where they had approved revisions to the standards that schools must meet for state accreditation and the requirements that students must meet to earn a high school diploma. The work leading up to these revisions is built upon what's called the Profile of a Virginia Graduate. Dr. Parrish has referenced this several times, most recently in her convocation address. The profile of a graduate describes the knowledge, skills, competencies, and experiences that a student must attain to be successful in college and/or in the workforce, and to be life-ready in an economy and a world characterized by rapid change. The profile of a graduate presents four areas for student learning and achievement considered essential to the success of students beyond high school. The first of which in yellow is the content knowledge, which is the knowledge of subject areas based on the state standards and their application of those standards. Workplace skills in green demonstrate personal skills and behaviors required for productivity, effective relationships, and problem-solving within one's workplace. Community engagement and civic responsibility, which is blue, is having an understanding of opportunities within civic organizations for service and decision-making and responsibility for respectful interactions with others. And career exploration, where individual participation and career exploration, planning, and presentation preparation, based on understanding of personal interests, skills, abilities, and the needs of the economy. So you're going to hear us talk a lot about this tonight and in the future, as we reference changes to our program of studies. Along the bottom, you saw that arrow in the previous slide. Those are the five Cs, and they're called the Five Cs of the 21st Century Learner. Five Cs are communication, collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, and citizenship. Students in Pecosin will continue to be exposed to the five Cs across all disciplines and in all content areas. The profile of the graduate heavily impacts the work that we do on our program of studies and in our committee. This committee meets each year to revise the course of study for our students, to include adding, deleting, and changing courses. Beginning in September, all faculty and staff can make recommendations for course changes or propose new courses. The committee comprised of school counseling directors, principals, and members of the central office staff meet in October and December to review those recommendations. Updates are then made to the booklet, and a draft will be presented to you tonight in our work session. Additionally, this year, you're going to see in the program of studies, there have been some updates to what's known as our academic and career plans. These are used by counselors to help students and their parents plan out their academic courses over a number of years and to focus on different career planning avenues. Also updated this year are what are called the 16 Career Clusters. These are broad groups of career fields, and in each field is broken down into career pathways, there are sample careers listed, and we list the suggested elective courses that would be a good match for those careers that we offer here in Pecosin. We encourage all of our students and parents to review these pages, as this information can be very helpful in course planning for next year. In the work session later this evening, I'll share with you more details about the new graduation requirements and our course additions, deletions, and changes. At the meeting in January, the board will be asked to vote on the 2018-19 Program of Studies, which our school counselors, students, and families will then use as they begin the registration process for next year's classes, which will start in February. Finally, tonight, we want to thank all of our teachers and our staff for a wonderful 2017. We wish them a restful break and a Happy New Year. That concludes my report this evening. Mr. Cass, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fox. Any questions or comments?
Dr. Fox, I have a question. I know that when my daughter was in, I went to the counselors to go over the career form for the diplomas and things. When did they do that again? Is that up to the parent to have that meeting with the counselor, or is that something that in late 11 somewhere that they will ask the parents to come in again?
You'll do it each year, so it'll be coming up right before we start the registration process. You'll get information on how to register for those appointments with your counselors from the high school.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to public comment, and we do have one card tonight, and Ms. Ramis, are there any others? Thank you. Tonight, we have Jeff Laney from 63 Odd Road, and Jeff, come on up. Okay, right here, it will be wonderful, and I wasn't sure if both of you want to come up, so welcome. I'm assuming this is Cassie?
Yes.
Thank you. Glad y'all are here.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for letting us have this time. We're basically here to talk about an incident that happened with our son at the high school in regards to the PE attendance policy and how somehow it seems like it supersedes the school attendance policy. And my wife dealt with it more on hand, so she's going to talk a little more about what kind of happened.
Yeah, we're just kind of here to see if the policy would be reviewed. He was sick. We got a phone call to come pick him up from school. He had a fever, came home, if this happened right before Thanksgiving. So he came home and stayed at home, sent a note back, called the school each morning to say he'd been absent, only missed like one and a half days, that he had a fever. And when he went back to school, the note was sent in saying that he had a fever, and we found out the Tuesday from Mr. Bush saying that he would have to come in and make up physical activity for that, those two days that he missed. So I emailed him back, and, you know, questioning if this was, did they not honor the parent note? And he proceeded to send me the policy, which I had, stating that the only reason that a student is excused from it is if they have a doctor's note, a funeral note, or if they have been to court. Those are the only three reasons that it would be excused. Otherwise, they would have to come in for 50 minutes after school and make up the physical activity. So I told him, you know, that he is in weight room Monday, Wednesday, Friday after school for baseball and basketball, and six days a week, they're required two and a half to three hours, you know, six days a week for basketball right now. And would that not suffice for the physical activity? And he said absolutely not, that it's just like any other class that he would have, that he would have to make that up, that they don't recognize the sports that the students play. And that's kind of where we're kind of, we're not asking for special privileges for him. That's why we're here to see if the policy will be reviewed, because we feel like if you're putting the time and effort to represent the city of Pecosin on a team, whether it's football, or cheerleading, or track, that that should be considered as an excuse. If he has a fever, he's not allowed to come to school anyways, so in essence, you're punishing him, and he's having to come back to make that up. So, I mean, I even said something like, you know, maybe there could be a form on the website, on the PE website, to where maybe the student was responsible, to go and print it off and take it to their coach and say, hey, Coach, can you vouch for me that yes, I'm getting 50 minutes of physical activity today? Take it back to the coach, to the PE teacher, no extra work for anybody but the student, and teach them to communicate well, so.
And the crazy thing is, is, I mean, it's not like the algebra teacher and the English teacher are asking them to come back for another 50 minutes of algebra class or English class. They make up their homework on their own, but they're actually telling him he has to come back for physical activity, which our son is at Pecosin High School like all the time. He's constantly working out, he's a two-sport athlete, he's always there. He's probably in the top 10% of kids at school in shape, and, you know, he's being asked to come back and play ping pong and badminton for an extra 50 minutes after school. And so now you're talking about, you know, he's coming back for, you know, two days that he missed, and now all of his classwork, everything that he's got to make up, you know, and if he has to miss practice or whatever... know, and if he has to miss practice or whatever, he's missing out on that instruction with his coach and everything like that. So it's just, you know, something that gets compounded over time. And I just think, you know, I thought it was ridiculous, you know, that he would have to do that. I mean, I understand why your policy's in place, you know, because some people, you know, tend to fabricate things about, you know, I know a B.C. America is a big issue, but, you know, at some point, there's some common sense here, you know, and I think. And my other problem is, I don't see how the PE policy, which we have here, I don't know if anybody would want a copy of it, but I don't see how that policy supersedes the school's policy for attendance.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming forward and giving us, expressing your concern about this policy. Dr. Parrish will be investigating some of this, and she'll be talking with administration about your conversations, I'm sure, with the principal, and she will respond to you timely. It'll be right after the break, though. We hope you guys have a Merry Christmas, and we do appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Vice Mayor?
Vice Mayor? I've been promoted.
Vice, whatever you, what are, Vice Chairman?
I've been called worse.
Will you lead us through the consent agenda?
Absolutely. There are five items on the consent agenda, and all were included in the packet that was online. Approval of financial reports, approval of personnel action, authorization to dispose of surplus property, authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with attached requests, and approval of minutes for November regular meeting and work sessions.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reimers.
Ms. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Schiller?
Aye.
Vice Chair Woodruff?
Aye.
Aye. Other matters for consideration. Dr. Parrish, consideration of approval of PCPS Capital Improvement Plan.
Yes, and we have, we're getting up on the screen so the community can see the copy of our capital improvement plan. We talked about this at your last work session, actually immediately following the conversation about school consolidation. And because you are moving forward in your decision at this point not to pursue school consolidation, we've actually added since your last meeting a section on, or some more information onto the CIP, and this also is put in place after your joint meeting with city council, because we talked to them about putting this piece of information on the CIP, because they are now in the process of making some decisions, financial decisions, and that will certainly impact it. But for those of you at home, before we talk briefly about the middle school, what you do see here are by school, the CIP projects they have and the year at this point that we have placed them in terms of when the work ideally would be done if it's financially feasible for the city. So you see under the primary school, it's a two-part roof replacement with the first one listed here in fiscal year 2020. So those two roof, that two roof, two roof part replacement totals over $1 million. And then I'm going to skip down here to the high school. So you'll also see here in the high school that we have another roof replacement project in 2020 at over $1.3 million, and then a small adjustment as well in 2022 at $32,000. You also see there that we have listed as a project to get air conditioning in the gym, because as many of you know, we don't have that at this time. So that was placed in 2021 for $180,000. And then across the bottom, you see bus replacement. We have been very fortunate in the last number of years that the city has been able to actually provide us a bus each, or one bus to be replaced each year, but because our buses continue to age, you'll always, when we have a CIP, see a continual replacement schedule for bus replacements. And then what you see is some things at the high school level for beyond 2023. What I want to bring your attention to now, though, really is the middle school section, because this is a change. This is the first time we've had any concrete information in the middle school section in quite a while. What we have placed in here are the five options or costs for the five options that came about during the facility study that was done in 2013 of the middle school. So it gives a range of costs for if we were to do, option one would be immediate repairs, would be a little over $5 million, ranging all the way at taking down the entire building and building a whole new school would cost over $31 million. So in between those numbers, we have a range with some renovation being done as part of option two, an option, and then some additional work for 2A, and then option three is called the modernization option, which really would mean a tremendous amount of work would be done in the building. Building systems would be updated, and you could actually see some new construction if we wanted to do something with the auditorium or back behind the gym to facilitate community use of the field that's behind there. And then option four would be actually bringing down the largest, the oldest section of the building and replacing it with a new building, but leaving the newer section and just remind everybody the newer section, that means we're talking in the 1950s, so it's not a tremendously new section. But, so what we provided here are the five options and the total. So as city council begins its discussions, they have in front of them those options. As you remember, we did update in November the cost with the facility study, with the people that did the facility study, the architects and engineers. So that is a cost estimate for those different items as of November 2017. And also realize that this work was done to give the school board back in 2013 and city council at that time, an idea of the range of possibilities for the middle school and the cost. So once, I believe, there's a determination of is there funding available that city council will be able to provide and how much that might be, then I would see you as a school board working with staff to really determine what will we do with the middle school, given that situation. So just because something is listed in the facility study, let's say, under modernization, you might decide that's not a priority now, but something else is that you would put in there. So just a reminder, there's flexibility in here, but this helps to give people a range of possible dollar amounts for different projects. So we're bringing this here for you tonight. I will recommend that you approve it. It will then be sent to the city, and they will continue their work. The planning commission will at some point have a look at this, as well as city council. But as you know from your joint meeting just a couple of weeks ago, that city council's really going to delve into some discussion about where they see funding for the CIP heading. And I know they were appreciative of the fact that even at your last meeting, we talked a little about the needs of the city beyond the school CIP. The city also sees as needs for their, for CIP, whether that's a new public safety building or new equipment for public works or new fire trucks. They also have items. And I know, I appreciate the fact that they recognize we've got two large roof projects on here, that if funding's available, as we all know for our own homes, at some point you've got to replace your roof, so I know that they're looking at that issue, too. So with that, I just recommend approval of the capital improvement plan, and this is just the beginning of the conversation with regard to the middle school.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish. Do we have a motion to approve the capital improvement plan? Do we have a second?
A second.
Any questions, discussion, comments?
Dr. Parrish, I have a question. The cost for the roof replacement at the middle school, the $975,000, if we were to choose any of those options, would those items be included in option one, two, three, or five? Or if we, if the city council decides to say just option three, would we still have those, that almost $1 million that would still have to come in funding?
Yeah, my recommendation would be that whatever option we do, especially depending on which one, obviously, that include the roof replacement within that option. It's broken out here separately, because at a minimum, if we do nothing else with that middle school, again, we've got to do some roof replacement there. So that's actually sad on your CIP, but if we do some major work to the middle school, I would envision that a priority for us would be replacing the roof and along with everything else that we had to do at that point.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Reimers?
Ms. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Schiller?
Aye.
Vice Chair Woodruff?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, item B, consideration of approval of first reading of changes to policy 5-7.6 employee absences, unified leave, and moving it to second reading. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, so what we bring here for you for first reading is a proposed change to policy. What we've come to realize when looking at what family members are included in the employee's ability to take leave due to illness for a family member, we don't have included in that a son and daughter-in-law, and oftentimes, our employees are obviously very close to their son and daughter-in-law, and if they have a health issue, they may need to take time to assist with the son or daughter-in-law, both in terms of if there are health issues or also if there were bereavement issues. So we're bringing to you for first reading a proposal to include the son and daughter-in-law on the list of people who would be considered immediate family or employees to attend to or sadly, if they need to attend for bereavement purposes, a ceremony of some sort. So we'd ask that you move this to second reading and then bring it to a second reading for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish. Do we have a motion to move this policy change to second reading, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Second and third.
Any questions or comments? I understand we're talking about sons-in-law and daughters-in-law, right?
Yes, yes, sorry, yes.
Any other? Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Scheller?
Aye.
Vice Chair Woodruff?
Aye.
Chairmen Cast?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, let's move on to communication. Dr. Parrish, would you kick us off, please?
Yes, first, I'd like to thank Ms. Woodruff and her staff. They've worked very hard during the audit process to provide all the information to our auditors and had multiple meetings starting back in the early summer and continuing through the early fall. So I thank you to you and your staff for the hard work, because certainly this is great news for us again this year. As Ms. Woodruff said, the budget is in full swing now. We will have for you at your January meeting information as to what the governor's proposed budget would mean for us. Remember that we get, we have the governor's proposed budget, and then we'll also get a budget from the House, and then we'll get a budget from the Senate as well. We'll get calculation tools for both of those. And then in March, after crossover has occurred, a final budget. In addition, we will, in the state of Virginia, have a new governor being inaugurated, so that could impact, too, obviously, the budget process. So we still have quite a ways to go. We're not anticipating, or I'm not anticipating, huge changes from what the governor's proposed in terms of large amounts of additional money coming to us. So once we're able to calculate where we are with this, I think we'll be in the ballpark likely for state, although things could change, depending on what happens, especially in the General Assembly in the coming weeks. I also want, I want to thank you. I referenced the joint meeting when talking about the CIP, but thank you for coming to that meeting, and I thought it was a great discussion with city council, and certainly you and council are moving forward, hopefully, a big project for the city. So thank you for the time that you spent there. I also, too, just want to publicly thank all of our music and band teachers. I've had the absolute privilege to attend all of the band and chorus concerts for the schools in the last couple of weeks, and our students just did a remarkable job, and our teachers got them to a point where they could do that remarkable job. So it was absolutely a pleasure, and it's certainly a neat thing to see them at the kindergarten level and then get to see our seniors in high school performing in the band in the choral concert and to really watch their growth through the years. And I, too, wish all of our employees a very happy holiday season, and I hope they're able to enjoy the break. And while we, I love the Suzy Snowflake song, I must say. I'm hoping that if we get any snow, maybe it's just over the break, so we don't have to contend with snow days for the rest of the winter. So thank you, and I hope you all have a wonderful holiday as well with your families.
Dr. Parrish, in honor of you, I didn't ask them to repeat that song.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Earlier this month, Pecosin Primary hosted a dairy presentation for students and staff. The mobile dairy classroom, along with Sally, a real cow, visited PPS. Students learned about the anatomy of dairy cows and the importance of dairy foods for good health, and watched an actual milking demonstration. Students and staff all enjoyed this informative and entertaining program and can't wait for Sally to come again next year. This month, Pecosin Primary recognized honesty. Teachers and students reinforced honesty as a critical trait of good citizenship. Honesty was acquired the criteria of this month's bucket filler breakfast. Students were selected as role models for honest behavior and celebrated by attending the bucket filler breakfast. The bucket fillers also had the opportunity to make good news phone calls home with Ms. Harper and Ms. Grisco. The good news phone calls were well-received by parents and students. The kindergartens and preschool students both celebrated the season by performing holiday songs for their parents. Late November, the PES fourth graders went to Jamestown. Many parents also attended, and everyone had a wonderful time learning about what life was like in Jamestown. This December, PES SEA representatives visited Dominion Village Assisted Living Facility and read the residents. The students also enjoyed spending time together in the SEA plans to visit again. December 8th was movie night for parents and students. For parents and students, they cuddled up with sleeping bags and pillows to watch the movie Moana. Last week, Ms. Breyer's class visited Farm Fresh and practiced social life skills within our local community. The hit of the field trip was they each got to ice the cookies, and they were great. PES also collected cookies for the troops. Today, fifth-grade students walked over to hear the band in choral concert at the middle school. The visit to PMS was fun, and they can't wait until next year to visit. The Pecosin Middle School Band and Chores held their winter concerts this month. Their performances were outstanding, and they were commended for their hard work. Chorus students also performed for the middle school students in the school-wide assembly on December 15th. The PMS Band and Chorus performed for fifth graders at the middle school this morning. The students are busy beginning to practice for the PMS spelling bee on January 8th. We also gearing up for the T-A-S-L-A-H character trait lessons on fairness, which will take place after the return for winter break. Pecosin High, the past month has been a busy one for the Pecosin High School community. Our bullying awareness program continued as our anti-bullying committee guided our school-wide bullseye lesson, highlighting the conflict resolution and strategies for diffusing situations. Our Alive program conducted the second safety belt check of the year and distributed ice scrapers to all student drivers, promoting the importance of driving clear, driving with a clear windshield in the winter. All of our driver's ed classes received a visit from Walmart truck drivers who emphasized sight lanes involved with semi-trucks on the roadway. In independent living, students applied the decision-making skills to research and select a car for purchase under $10,000. Students in 10th grade English honors classes demonstrated their skills of persuasion by selling their favorite books to their peers as a last-minute gift option, while students in world geography classes completed a project-based learning experience focused on developing proposals for the big woods. Also engaged in PBO, advanced math and math analysis, students presented their solution from their in-trouble-with-debt projects to all economics and personal finance classes. The arts are also thriving at PHS. Both band and chorus students delivered a stellar winter concert and are preparing to share their talents with the entire school in our showcase tomorrow during the school day. Preparations are underway for the PHS musical, The Addams Family. Our students continue to make their mark in the classroom, on their sports teams, and in their clubs and activities. We wish everyone a safe holiday break and look forward to what 2018 has in store.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holcomb?
Thank you, Chairman Cast. Just like to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season tonight, and I also enjoyed, I was glad you asked for the third song from our kindergarten presentation group tonight, because I was enjoying the guy in the front row, young man in the front row here on this side, who reminded me of NFL player. He was trying to do his best to perform well while watching himself on the monitor at the same time. You notice that? I really enjoyed that part of the program. That's all, Chairman Cast, thank you.
Right. Ms. Mosteller?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd also like to thank students who presented tonight. It was a lovely holiday show, and thank you for asking them to sing one of their songs again. It just seems like yesterday, both of my children were there, and Ms. Poto's music class sang Christmas concerts, and she always does a fantastic job of sharing the love of music with all of our students. I mean, we're really going to miss her. I also want to congratulate the individuals who were recognized tonight, and ask them to keep up the good work. I'd also like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Laney for coming tonight and ask for more information concerning that specific policy, and even add to a work session if needed. And just last, I'd like to thank all of our faculty and staff and students and for everything they do, and wish them a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
they do, and wish them a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Ms. Hessler?
I just also want to say happy holidays to everybody. The kids did a great job, and...
I'll sing with the kids. Ms. Scheeler?
Just wanted to say so much enjoyed Chloe Carpenter's Let There Be Peace on Earth. It's a wonderful holiday thought, so thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Whitaker?
Yes, just one item. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I meant to mention this last month, and it went right out of my head. I believe that I had some residents of Pecosin call me and leave me a message at home, as we ask them to do when they have concerns. Unfortunately, I had major phone problems. Things got deleted, erased, and I had asked staff to change my phone number to my cellphone number, which they did on the website. So if anybody is out there and listening, and you did not get a call back from me, I apologize. Great, I'm looking at the camera. I apologize, I'm so sorry. Call me back, please, on my cellphone, and I'll be sure to answer it or get back to you. My apologies. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. I had the privilege of meeting Brigadier General Dick Abel, who I was excited to meet with him because several reasons. He had been in the White House a couple of times. He was a general, had served our country admirably. He'd worked on the International Olympic Committee, is an author, a renowned servant leadership training across the country. I had no idea he lived in the city of Pecosin and had a great time visiting with him. One of the first things he said to me was how impressed he was with Becky Morrison at the high school and the military recognition and interaction program that they did with the high school students. So I'm happy that we honored all those folks and happy to have someone like Brigadier General recognize Becky Morrison. So I know that she's just probably watching tonight, because this is a riveting program, but if she's not, will you all please let her know about these comments? And I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and hope you have a Happy New Year. And I want everybody to know, from the school board down to everyone that works in the school system, how much that they are appreciated. And let's move on. Do we have any material for board review?
No, other than the information that's at your seat from Ms. Woodruff in terms of the audit materials.
All right, we're going to be moving into work session, where we are going to be talking about the program of studies. We're going to have a bully prevention update, and we are going to talk about the school board meeting schedule. So we will stand adjourned.